Mullins.
Here.
Hanlon.
Here.
Noggle. Spoon.
Here.
Wagers.
Here. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, opportunity for the public to be heard. Okay, we don't have that, so moving on, Pace Setter Award.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask Cindy to come and join me at the front. She's excited about joining me at the front. I love doing Sandite awards like this. Just a real quick story. We were at a school board convention over the weekend, and you get together with a bunch of other nerdy school board members. You talk about what you do that's successful. And one of the things was, what do you do to get the people involved in your board meetings? And I said, "We give them awards." And we give them awards, and people show up, and you know, with little kids, grandma, grandpa, aunt, uncle, cousins, whatever, and it fills it up, and it... And to see the smile on their faces is really cool. Not just kids, but superstar people that we have working for us the same way. So we appreciate the opportunity to do this. And let me just read what a Sandite Pace Setter Award is, because it's kind of cool. It says that Sand Springs Public Schools proudly presents a certificate to we have the person for outstanding achievements and accomplishments as a Sand Springs Public School employee. And that says a lot, that you come, you do your job, it's outstanding, and you go above and beyond. So we want to ask Kayla Wilson to come and join us today. Kayla works with... I'm gonna stand in the middle. You're the most important one here. And here's your award, and I want to read what Cindy wrote, and then we'll let Cindy tell more about it. Cindy nominated you, and this summer, she said, "Sand Springs Public Schools' IT department looked on... took on significant challenge integrating the district's access, control, and alarm systems. At the heart of this complex transition was Kayla, whose dedication and... I love this positive attitude were essential to its success. From June, Kayla worked nonstop..." Does that mean you didn't get to go home?
No.
Kayla worked nonstop to ensure that every individual had the correct access in both the old and the new systems. She faced a monumental task, but she approached it with unwavering commitment. Instead of becoming overwhelmed by the long hours and intricate details, Kayla maintained a cheerful and cooperative demeanor. Her hard work wasn't just about completing tasks, it was about doing so with a level of grace and positivity that made a difference for everyone involved. What a deal. Thank you for what you did. Thank you. So I'm gonna give you this too, and Cindy, you might want to tell more about the story.
She has just been amazing this summer. In fact, she was on vacation last week, and we all felt it. Bob looked at me when he came in on Tuesday, and he said, "Who's gonna make the coffee?" She just does... She answers the phone, whatever we need done. She just is really good. And she will just come in, you know, and sit down and just tell you what's on her mind, and she's just been fabulous. So we've certainly enjoyed her.
All right, I have Bob Jackson for the same award, so if you could join us up here, come on. Come on down. So Ms. Cindy also nominated Bob for this wonderful award, which is very deserving from what I'm reading here. And if I was an IT gal, I would know about it, but I'm not, so I'm not going to pretend, but it sounds great. So I'm going to read what Ms. Cindy had to write. She writes, "Bob's tireless efforts over the past year have been a cornerstone of Sand Springs School's successful fiber project." What is a fiber project?
Fiber optic cable for...
There you go.
Past internet.
See, there... I didn't even know. Am I fiber in your clothes? Okay. "From its inception in the spring of 2024, its completion in June 25, he devoted countless hours to preparing the network switches for its significant upgrade. This dedication has paid off immensely. Thanks to his hard work, the district now boasts a 10-gigabit connection to all major sites, a goal Bob had championed for years. His commitment to this project is a shining example of his broader dedication to making the SSPS IT team the best it can be. It's a testament to how one individual's hard work and passion can drive a whole organization forward, improving technology and connectivity to... for everyone in the district." That's amazing. Good job. And I'm gonna let Ms. Cindy say why she nominated him a little bit more.
Bob has been amazing, and this is the beginning of my third year here. He has been... And I'm gonna tell you that Bob is my left hand. Most people would say, "But he should be your right," but Bob's left-handed. So Bob wants to be my left hand instead of my right, and he has truly been fantastic. And he doesn't like this type of thing, and so this has been a challenge for both of us, but he wears it with a smile as always.
Awesome. Well, here's your awesome award, and much deserved.
Thank you all so much for the work that you do. You guys are why Sandites have the reputation of being Sandites. So thank you. Okay, this is the part where you can go if you would like to, or you can stay for the nuts and bolts. That is up to you. We're gonna dive in. Number five, student empowerment.
So I'm gonna start with the second portion of our report, and that is the Report of the 21st Century Grant. We applied for a third grant this year and did not get the one for Pratt Elementary. I'm super sad about that. So just to kind of give you perspective, we run two full programs. One services Limestone... Yes, Limestone and Angus, the other Garfield and Northwoods. We were a little bit nervous this year, as you all know, because of the holding of federal dollars at the federal level. Those have been released, so we're sound for another year for those four elementary sites, but we won't get Pratt. So this is the last year for Limestone and Gar... or not Limestone, I keep saying that, for Garfield and Northwoods, which, as you all know, are... Those two school sites are most in need of some after-school and summer programming. So we're a little bit in limbo regarding the release of the money next year, so we'll see. But currently, Ms. Conrad is in the process of writing another grant for Garfield and Northwoods for next year. So we'll see. It's been a little bit shaky. Claudia is not here to represent federal programs tonight. She had something she had to do personally, but she would tell you if she were here that it's been more than a little bit stressful, knowing how many people we employ, how many stop-ins we play, and how many kids we serve in those programs. So a super important part of what we do and the work we do in Sand Springs. But moving on, Sean has prepared a little bit of a thing for dropout and remediation, just a little bit. But I am proud of our graduation rate, to be honest about it. And he's gonna kind of go into detail. You have a link in my notes to that report, so he didn't put it on the screen, so if you want to pull that up, I think he's gonna take you through that.
So I'm gonna let you give the graduation rate after I'm done, if you want to, if you want to do that part, but...
Absolutely, you should do it.
Okay, all right. So when you look at our graduation rate, when we look at schoolreportcard.org, our four-year graduation rate is at 90%, which, when you compare that to area schools, it's a nice thing, something that we can crow about, definitely. But the data that you're looking at right here, this is simulated from attendance rates, graduation rates, as well as the district-wide student needs assessment, which we don't turn that in until the summer. So the data that you're looking at is actually a year behind. So the dropout rates that you're looking at here are for FY '24. And later on, when I get to the end of the report, the remediation rates that you're looking at are from FY '23. So that puts us at a little bit of a disadvantage in terms of trying to proactively work towards decreasing those numbers and then being able to see the return quickly. But we always come back at this time of the year to look at this. This comes from schoolreportcard.com, or no, oaklisschools.com. Sorry, they've changed it. And so previously, this came from a different report that the state used to put out, and we used to get just a general number of our total dropout percentage. But since they've been putting this on oaklisschools.com, we get a lot more data out of it. So it really breaks down the dropout rates by age really well, so you can see that across the top and then on the first page. And then when you go a little lower, it starts to break it out in terms of the rates for students by ethnicity. And you can see across there that that also shows the dropout rates by ethnicity and by Clyde Boyd and Charles Page High School students. And then as you go down to the bottom of the report, dropout rates by economically disadvantaged and not economically disadvantaged. You can see the discrepancy there. 5% for economically disadvantaged and then 1.4% for not economically disadvantaged. If you turn the page, they break it out in terms of English learners and non-English learners. Interestingly, there's not a wide band of difference between our non-English learners and our English learners, nor economically disadvantaged and non-economically disadvantaged. Why did you ask me that? Okay, so which one, the economically disadvantaged? Is that one first? Yes, okay. So students that are economically disadvantaged, because of their economic status, they may or may not have the same types of advantages of students whose parents might be in a higher income bracket, for instance. So as a result, poverty tends to affect things like, obviously, attendance, but academics in different ways. And so as a result, you're seeing that students that are at a lower income level or that are more disadvantaged because of their economic status tend to be the more of our dropout rate. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes.
That's exactly what that means.
That's exactly what that means. And then out of our students that are not, 1.4% dropped out. And then when you look at the other one that you were asking about... So English learners are students that come to us where English is not their first language in the home. So, and as you would guess, a student that's an English learner is gonna have a distinct disadvantage because they're coming into an English-speaking world. And so academically, what this tells us is what we can do with this data is we can go to our department where we provide Yale services, and we can start to target those students more effectively and try to diminish those dropout rates by providing additional services and wraparound intervention, so... And then interestingly enough, when you look down the next category, dropout rates by gender, it doesn't differ that much from males to females. So it just... There's a slight difference by school, but beyond that, not much. And then homeless students versus non-homeless students. We actually had a large percentage, 17% of our homeless students dropped out versus 3.2% of our students that are not homeless. And then our last page, students with disabilities and students without disabilities. You see that there's... For students with disabilities, there's a slightly larger dropout rate of 4.2% across the board versus students without disabilities at 3.4%. But by far, total, all students combined, we have a rate of 3.5%. That report, like I said, comes from data that is now a year old, so those... That rate... Those rates are for students that graduated in 2024.
And I wrote in our notes, Sean, what glared at me is what was the homeless number?
Yeah.
Because it's hard to track those.
Yeah.
And so we really have to make a concerted effort to make sure we're knowing where the kids are, keeping track of their graduation, and just understand that it's a population that can be hard to reach because of the circumstances.
Which, to that end, one of the things that we're doing to help with that is we're in the midst of... I think Claudia's in the middle of writing a grant to provide additional staff to help with that specific cause. And then the last thing that you see on the bottom of this report, this comes from a spreadsheet that we get from the State Department, the remediation rates for FY '23. So this is data that is now two years old, so we're a little bit behind on that because they... What this shows you is basically of our students that graduated and went to college, how many of those students went to college, and how many of them required within their first year remediation in science, English, math, or reading. And so typically, higher ed has a little bit of a lag in reporting time, so that's why we're getting data from FY '23. Next year at this time, we should see data from FY '24. This is slightly higher than it was for FY '22. So for our around 400 graduates from FY '23, 146 of those were first-time degree-seeking freshmen. And none of them required remediation in science. Seven of those students required remediation in English. 22 required remediation in math, and 13 required remediation in reading. So for a total of 21.2% of those students requiring some form of remediation in their freshman year.
I would just add, we want to see those numbers at zero, obviously. We want them to go to school being prepared to learn. But the other thing I would say is we would never want to discourage a student who might not be completely, totally prepared from going first-year's freshman, because we also know other things factor into their performance. So motivation, grit, determination, all those things, ability to study, focus. So while we would work toward a 0%, we also wouldn't want to discourage a first-time college graduate or college attendance. So I mean, that's something we continue to work on. I think we're getting better. I know we had a little bit of more percentage that needed remediation this year, but I still think kind of our focus on the PLCs and curricular standards.
Right. So some of the efforts that we're making towards focusing on academic performance, showing growth from year to year, specifically some of the work that's been done by Ms. Noel and Mr. Neely in the double block for math and language arts. I'm hoping that we'll see some gains out of that as those students near college. That's a few years away for us right now. You know, in our efforts to work towards effective use and use of our curriculum with integrity, I think we'll start to see some of those numbers drop over time.
You're gonna see a report by Sean in October. I know those two, and Angela specifically, just because she was the principal last year and developed that double block schedule. But looking at a breakdown of probably it's just scores, raw scores, because they changed the statistical cut score on the test this year. It's gonna be hard to compare last year to this year unless we go to just actual student number of items right. But they're working on it right now, so it'll take a little bit more time than maybe it typically does. Anything you want to add?
That same report next year may be even harder. That's all I'm gonna say.
That's true. So questions for Mr. Beard? Resource innovation.
Okay. So of course, I always attach the OESA. I asked Cassidy for his reflections today, and he said it's the same as it always is. We know that we have to be cautious and conservative when we enter into any kind of revenue year, that we think there could be some opportunity for loss. Our enrollment was down this year. We always, you know, I'm cautious. I used to get super excited about enrollment until finally figured out that there's a 10-day drop period, which means after 10 days of non-attendance, the kids get dropped. So we're slightly down over where we were at with our high ASR annual statistical number, but we are up a little from first quarter, or from ASR this last year. So we'll see. We'll continue to watch, make sure that, you know, we're doing everything we can to get kids at school. We do know birth rates are down, which doesn't help. Enrollment across the state in public education is also down for a lot of different factors. I would throw in school choice as a piece of that. We are... We have posted, and I think found, another four-year-old teacher, meaning she's of age, but she's gonna be teaching fours. Anyway, she's fully certified because our enrollment at the ECC was 20 students up. So if that's indicating a trend going forward, I'm pretty excited about that. Nonetheless, it's pretty amazing we found a teacher that was certified with a master's, I think, special education, maybe? That's right, library, yes. I did too, maybe I was hoping. Anyway, I'm pretty excited about that potential growth. We're fine, by the way. I don't want to leave anybody thinking that the district's not stable financially, because we are, but it's just something we watch, of course, every year. Questions? You know, we're going through, just kind of doing our thing with budget. Cassidy's gonna be presenting the second or the first revised budget tonight along with Esteban and Nate, so you're gonna get to hear from him later, but if you have any questions, sure, we'll answer them. Seeing none. Are we ready to move on to item number seven?
Yes, number seven.
Big announcement, we're having a topping ceremony. It's officially what that's called, i.e. a beam signing at Clyde Boyd Middle School for the new facility on September 18th. So we kind of orchestrated that with Brent, the supervisor over there, to make sure that, you know, he wouldn't have to drop a beam and hang one back up. So we'll have an opportunity to sign it and watch it go up. That'll be fun. And then hopefully soon, a ribbon-cutting ceremony. We had a small teams meeting with KKT and LDHorns today regarding the press box, and I asked about the timing, and I got zero answers, so I'm gonna have to wait till tomorrow or the next time we meet. So we'll see. But it's getting there. You can see the progress, and it's coming along, but it just has taken longer than I would like for it to have taken. We released our first podcast via Lisa Chittister. We're scheduled for another one here in a few days. I actually like to communicate that way, to be honest about it. I had a person that watched our last one with Cabinet. They loved doing that too, by the way. And the feedback was, we just usual people, like we make mistakes, we misspeak, and then we correct ourselves, and we adjust a little bit, and I don't know. It makes us feel human, at least, and I think it appears human to other people. CPHS hosted their college fair this year for parents and students. That was Tuesday last week. It's always a great turnout. And then maybe my favorite thing to report is our first group of edge students will graduate this spring with an associate's degree and a high school diploma, which is pretty cool. So this is the first year we actually have 40 full kids in the program with a cohort of 10 in ninth, 10 in 10th, 11th, and 12th. So pretty fun to see that program expand. So questions? We did. We need to do that at the end of the year. Who's... Where are my people? We need to do that at the end of the year, bring them in and celebrate them. I hate to say their names, but one of the girls that's gonna graduate, she used to work for us in this office, and I can remember the first time she was kind of onboarded that program. Mom was so excited, because essentially, we're paying the cost. She's getting an associate's for free. So that means they start out with college entrance two years ahead, which is pretty commendable, so... Any other questions? Okay, moving on to health and safety. You see two agendas. One is for safe schools, the other one is for healthy schools. The State Department makes us break those two out. Mr. Smith heads up the safe schools. Ms. Pearson is on top of the healthy schools. It's drill season, so you can... You'll see kids, you know, doing all kinds of fire, all those kinds of things. We have continued to remind people about the greatest deterrent of any kind of egregious, like a school shooting happened, would be locked doors. We, as you know, those of you that stayed for the OSSBA roundtable, that was kind of a hot topic of what people are doing. And I just kind of would be on that frame of you've got to stay diligent. We know the things that work with school safety, and so just that constant reminder. I made a comment about how people weren't thrilled with having classroom doors locked when we first started implementing that. But now, it's kind of fun to have to pull out my key to open a classroom door to go in to see a teacher. So anyways, it's... They're on it, and they are being diligent about that. I'm gonna mention Ms. Lakey, where she was able to secure another, well, additional opioid prevention grant to the tune of $205,000, which will allow us to pay that, our employee Caitlin Knowlton, another three years. She's gonna be presenting also in October. Couple of you got to go to her breakout session at OSSBA, and she spoke on Saturday, I believe, and did a fantastic job, threw out some data I made her jump back to with the people in the room. And she was commenting. She took over what we call our WARP program, which is a suspension reduction. Tim Ray used to do it, and she took it over. They had 24 long-term drug suspensions last year, but only three of those suspensions actually repeated behavior, and we're back in trouble, which is a really good rate, meaning it's working. So super excited about that. So hooray for Carrie for working extra to get the money in so we can provide the staff that we need. Any questions about safe and healthy?
No questions? Okay, consent agenda.
I'm gonna mention one more thing. I probably should have said it in the student. The grant for the Transition Academy is pretty great. I'm gonna be speaking at the chamber, and I told Carrie I need the information from all the stuff we're doing extra that's grant-funded, that's providing some more services, and she jumped in and said, "Can I come?" And "Can I bring Matt Brown?" And "Can I bring..." Anyway, she's gonna come and speak and try to get some help from our businesses to maybe offer some internships for those kids. So she is just moving and shaking, so thank you.
Yes.
Okay, on to consent agenda. I would bring your attention to item number 22. You're gonna see a lot of policies tonight. We'll talk through the ones that were... are on the action items for tonight. It's a first-read and done. These are first-read to be approved at the next meeting. I wanted to bring your attention to letter B. We've been... We don't have a service animal or an animals-in-school policy. That one's straight up from OSSBA with the addition of the actual definition of service animal to help us deflect maybe some folks that might want to suggest that they need a service animal at school, but maybe they don't. So that was a proponent that Carrie had wanted to make sure we included in the policy. I believe we stole it from GINX, to be honest about it, and their policy. But anyway, I just wanted to bring that, your attention, because that is brand-new. Item number 27 is the service agreement for what used to be KKT Architects. We just got the same agreement with the new name today. They have rebranded, and they're called Ethos. So Beth will be having us sign or having me sign that same agreement with the new rebranded name, but I wanted to bring that to attention, because we're changing that in our system, so I think you knew that from this weekend. Item number 31, you're gonna see two things on the agenda. One is on the consent for the review and approval of an administrator contract for Kim Cleney for a consultant fee for the next finishing out this year. She, as you know, has been... I call her the district historian because of her vast knowledge of all things Sand Springs for a lot of years. She's fully moving to Arkansas, which is great for her, but was also willing to stay on as a consultant. So as we accept her resignation in an action item, I believe, we're also saying not goodbye, but thank you for helping us continue throughout the year as a consultant. So I wanted to bring that to your attention as well. I think that's it, unless you guys have questions. There's a lot of committees that are due in September that we do this... Do every year, so nothing really new there, except maybe the names. So questions?
No questions? Okay, do I hear motion?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. A vote, please.
Mullins.
Aye.
Hanlon.
Aye.
Spoon.
Aye.
Wagers.
Aye. Okay, moving on to actions, action items. Number 51, proposed executive session to discuss employment recommendations for the 2526 school year. Okay, seeing none. Moving on to 52, proposed approval of employment recommendations for the 2526.
I want to make one comment, Madam President, if you don't mind.
Yes.
The one paraprofessional for the Early Childhood Education Center has retracted her application, and so she won't be working for us. So we would ask you to approve item number 52, with the exception of the one paraprofessional at ECC.
Okay. Okay. Do I hear motion?
I'll second.
Okay.
That's correct. And posted another teacher for ECC and found one within about three...
And, and posted another teacher for ECEC and found one within about three days. It's so good. I would say, I'm going to admit, that the second grade position that's posted at, oh yeah, and music at Angus, yeah, we have music teacher at Angus, second grade at ECEC, or Northwoods, but all of those were late resignations. So, yes, I would agree with you.
That is very nice. Okay, we had a motion and a second, can we vote, please?
Mullins?
Aye.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Spoon?
Aye.
Wagers?
Aye. Number fifty-three, the proposed approval of the listed policies to add to the district policy manual.
Right. So, most of these are because they're required by law. Ordinarily, if there was something we needed you to read and consider, we'd give you longer than that. So we're going to go through each one and answer any questions that you might have, but all that you see in red are pretty much required by law. Maternity leave makes it clear that the additional leave would also be calculated as part of the FMLA twelve-week allowance that employees get that by law. So there's that one. And please stop me if you have. That's correct, yeah. That came up at OSSBA too, if you were in that breakout session. Because law, I guess legislators were thinking, physical recovery, yeah, so.
So do we offer paternity?
We don't at this time, no. Termination of teachers was a change simply because we, by law, have to include knowingly and willful failure reports suspected child abuse or neglect. We all have known that we have to do that for a long time, but it was required to be in policy. Kristin, you're welcome to help me out on any of these. Again, looking at termination procedures for teachers, that's a revise to include, you know, abuse and neglect, and there's also some language about, we maintain a record two years from the day of the hearing if that were to happen with the board. So, pretty simple. DOAC, support personnel suspension. I don't want to forget anything, so Kristin, keep me honest. And that's not coming up for me? Maybe you take it, do you have it up? I'm on DOAC, support personnel, suspension, demotion, non-renewal, or termination. Thank you. E and F are both relative to reduction in force. This was something that we felt like we needed to clean up. It had been a while since we had even looked at this policy. Here's the truth, even in 2017, when we were having to make pretty draconian cuts, because if you'll remember, we had a revenue failure and they clawed money back. And my first entrance into the superintendency, I was sitting leaders down and saying, okay, what can we cut? Because we know the biggest part of our budget, eighty-five to ninety percent is in people. Anytime you have a downturn with enrollment or a downturn in federal funding, we have, I don't know, Claudia again couldn't be here tonight, but lots of employees are paid from six-twenty-one, which is special education, Title I, which is disadvantaged. We pay portions of salary out of Title II. We have a lot of people that are living on federal money for their salary support. So, we felt like it might be a good time just to clean that language up. So basically, we struck our current policy, adopted the OSSBA policy for reduction in force for both certified and support. It names specifically decrease in revenue or student enrollment, changes in curriculum, and then basically what you would consider as a board. We wouldn't, we always were able to do, have always been able to do any kind of cuts through attrition. So thankfully, there's never been a time, I mean, we've only really done some severe cuts one time, but it was based on those leaving by nature of retirement or resignation that we cut those positions or rewrite, I don't say size, but. Reassigned in a right way so that we covered all of the things to try to not be adverse with student learning. So, that really is what this about, is about. I would say, there is a little caveat about the level of performance for evaluation for teachers. Obviously, that should be a consideration because we want the good ones, but also there's some caveats about seniority and loss of programming or loss of funds. So, I don't foresee, to be honest, that we would have to do that, but I certainly wouldn't want to be caught off guard if we were at some point at loss for federal funding and had to figure it out. And that could happen. And I think just kind of facing the possibility of unsurety of federal money is a really good reason why we would need to clean that up. So Kristin, if you want to add anything to those two. Any questions about those two? I know you've looked them over.
Just the policies in general, and I understand that a number of these are a result of legislation that changes past year, but then some others are, I'm assuming that we have a process or you have a group that is continually looking at the policies and saying, hey, this one needs a little tweaking, and so just throughout the years, we have a team doing that?
We have a policy committee that does that. Some, if, it's like antisemitism is one example of something that even in committee wouldn't have been affected because it was a matter of law. So we'd have a choice. But anything where we might have a choice, like, for instance, when we revisited the suspension policy, full team. Lots of times those meetings are virtual, but sometimes they're in person as well. And so we have teachers, counselors, principals, Noel was a part of it too, looking at it, and really, they find some stuff, that words are weird, they, it doesn't seem in order, this would be better if it was this way, so yes. But sometimes, like, again, going back to the antisemitism, I'm not saying that word right probably, but that was absolute language written into, I think, the rules, to be honest. Yeah, and you, so you can't really, there's really no quarreling about those. It may be time to.
Policy services.
It's a policy service, yeah. Well, it's interesting, because when we did the first one, the last time, I think the board went through the full policy reflection was when Lloyd Snow came, and it was in 2000, I believe. And a lot of them are adequate. Cassidy found one he's getting ready to talk about here in a minute, but stuff doesn't change super rapidly. I feel like this year, you know, you got, some of you went to the alleged conference on Thursday last week, and it was pretty overwhelming this year with the law book. I felt like OSSBA did a really good job of condensing it into kind of a small book, but when we left COSA, we had, you know, the eight-and-a-half-by-eleven-bound booklet that went into detail, and it's not easy. And I feel like this year was probably more encompassing than most of them are, so.
H got my attention with the one statement in it, I'll just read it real quick. Any superintendent school administrator knowingly and willfully fails to promptly report or interferes with the prompt reporting of abuse or neglect shall upon conviction be guilty of a felony in accordance with state statutes, da-da-da-da. Wow.
They're serious.
They're serious about it.
I, you know, I, I think we've, we're supposed to do that. I don't really understand why there would be any reflection. What has made it a little difficult, and I'm going to be honest, if you're following, if you follow the Sperry story about the incident, I believe it was a locker room, I'm not sure where it was, but the three, I believe, some, two were coaches, one may have been an administrator, they finally got their certification reinstated. So, it's tricky because, of course, you have to report, but also, teachers should get due process. And so that was written into the law as well, finally, in the spring, about you can't just be in a place where your certificate is suspended without getting to tell your story. So Gary would call that due process, most attorneys would call that due process. And even when we're reviewing suspect behavior with teachers, we're doing some, we're asking them to tell their side of the story. So, I think it's an obvious, I also think that people are sometimes a little quick to judge, and we do our job. So, that's what we do, we do our job and we do it well, I feel like. So I don't really have heartburn over that, to be honest, but anyway, yes, you're correct.
Two more questions.
You bet.
How do we determine what is a policy as opposed to what is a practice and what is put in the handbooks for the various schools?
So, you can't write everything in policy.
You can't what?
You can't write everything in policy. Policies can't be so descriptive that you account for every single incident that could happen. So we do a handbook, as you know, we have a staff handbook that you all have seen. Each side has student handbooks as well. So you try to, it's kind of like, what does that policy mean? How do we go about it? And so procedurally, a lot of those things happen in handbooks. We, for, here's an example. We were asked to provide our protocol for how we, how we get references for people. In other words, what, how are you doing that? We do a slide every year, we don't really have a protocol book. Kristin and I kind of talked about, maybe we should put that in the format of like a how-to book, which we could. The first year, one of the first years I was special ed director, I started very poorly, by the way, because I know that since I left that director's position for special ed, we had a district protocol for interpreting the policy procedures that the State Department puts out. And so, I feel like every time you try to do a specific handbook and cover every little instance, there's always something that comes up that's not covered by the handbook. And when it does, we go back to the drawing board. So that piece came up, and I said, Kristin, I know you have slides, you just presented that. But basically, we ask leaders, when they're interviewing, to get three references and go deep, even deeper than what people put on their reference, and they do a good job. We don't have it written anywhere other than a PowerPoint, a Canvas slideshow that we presented at leadership, you see what I'm saying? So, I think it's always just an ongoing process of making sure we're getting as much down as we can, and then when we don't have something that's procedurally not written down, we go, oh, probably need a procedure for that. Cassidy and his team just did a finance how-to, I don't know, you'd say it better than me, in that department, which needs to happen, I've yet to scour over it yet. But there'll be things that he leaves out too. We're going over things in activity funding, for instance, how would that be better? We're considering ways to do that differently. So, it's ongoing, Mike, I wish I could say that we've just got it all under control, but as soon as I say that, something's going to come up and it's like, ugh, hadn't thought of that, so.
I would just add too, and I'll talk about the raffles when we get down to that point, but through attrition, you know, just natural turnover, especially within our department, procedures are passed down, but policies are not always handed down as well. They're kind of discovered. So over the last year, I mean, you will see over the next few months, policies hit the board agenda. They just need updating. And so, procedures are kind of an annual thing because we're training staff on that. But I think this past year and probably the last four or five months, we've been asking, do our policies back up what our procedures actually are, so.
Let's go to the policy, and if it's not addressed, then we're thinking about how we change it or writing protocol that would be in alignment with what the policy says. If we tried to put every nugget in a policy book, it would be, I mean, yeah, it would be egregious. But that's a great question, we think about it all the time.
The last question I've got, it's not really a question. If anybody would ask me before I saw this agenda, I had no idea we allowed corporal punishment.
We always have, isn't that crazy?
I had no idea, so.
I was asked about it.
Opt-in, opt-out, I got it, so.
I'm going to get down to that because I want to talk about it.
Sorry.
Because, of course, the FFG is the reporting of suspected child abuse and neglect, and that's another one that, again, add some language in there that we needed to have via the law. But, when you think, and funding, we'll come back to that. Well, let's just do the funding first, and then we'll talk about corporal punishment. Okay, so go, go, Cass.
You're talking about the raffles.
Letter I, fundraising by school organization.
So, this is really a product of the adoption of this policy being in June of 2004, and then the state law changing in November of 2004. So our policy originally read that it was illegal in the state of Oklahoma to do raffles. And I think Stacy actually discovered that when I asked her the question, what does our policy say? And so she pulled that, we noticed that we really shouldn't be doing raffles, but we know our activity groups, especially our booster clubs, like to do those. And so, it was kind of a sense of urgency to get it on the board agenda and get it as a first read and done. And this policy follows, this is from OSSBA. The only thing we tightened up on it was that we don't like them handing out cash prizes. I think that's kind of sticky, you know? And so they can hand out prizes that were donated up to a value of $600, and that's not us regulating that, that's the IRS. So if you hand out prizes valued at over $600, then they really should receive a $10.99 from the IRS. So we're kind of protecting that group as well, and those individuals that receive those. That, and then the small sentence on eleven that emphasizes that school-affiliated organizations shall contact ABLE Commission to apply for an exemption for any bingo-style night. That's directly from OSSBA as well. We added that in there because you have to pick up the phone and call ABLE to be able to make sure you have that exemption. But we added that sentence into the policy itself. The OSSBA one didn't have that originally, but we wanted to emphasize that, which follows training that we've received from them. So, this is really just a product of state law changing within four months, and finally, really digging into policy, so.
Cassidy said, we can't do raffles. I said, what do you mean? He goes, we can't do raffles. I said, is it against the law? He goes, no, but our policy says we can. I'm like, well, we need to change the policy. So it's stuff like that that you uncover that you just don't think about, anyway. But we have, he's right, we've been doing raffles for a while, and it's kind of an imperative one to change, to keep us honest, this year. It was, there was a ticket with it.
I love it.
That was Gary's loophole, by the way, but come to find out they're illegal.
We all do raffles.
Well, they're not, so far, they're not governed, she's fine, so.
We're still littles, we're not school.
PTO, we.
Well, after tonight, upon approval of this item, you can officially do raffles.
Her, our policy. Legal by policy, not by law, that's the thing.
Correct.
Yeah, so. Let's talk about corporal punishment for a minute. By the way, we will not have a practice of corporal punishment while I am superintendent, I assure you. And this is just an opinion, take it or leave it. So I'm not representing the board, I'm representing experience and my own inclination about what can and cannot get you in trouble and why in the world you would lay your hands on a student as beyond me. But, this came up because of a law this semester, this spring, that disallowed corporal punishment with students with special needs, and five oh fours, I believe. It's in the policy, disability, yep. So, while it's allowed per Oklahoma law, the policy needed to say that you cannot, you know, there are certain subsets of students that you cannot use that form of discipline. I'm here to tell you that I think our leadership team would agree, the kind of pickle that I think that you could get yourself in with this girding on abusing, I mean, we're supposed to be reporting abuse and neglect. How is it that we would utilize that methodology? So that's my opinion. I suppose if there was a Board of Education that would disagree and think otherwise, then we'd be back in the drawing board, but that's something we've never used. But that's something we've never used since I've been employed at Sands Springs Public Schools. So.
So I have a question. But what if you hire a teacher that does do this? Are they protected by this policy?
No, because we would be writing up a discipline. You see what I'm saying? Like, that's probably something I need to add to the handbook. While the policy and state law might allow that in Sands Springs Public Schools, we will not be using corporal. The other part I would say is that would be another piece that would be clarified by the student handbook at each site. So when you look at possible disciplinary action, you're not going to see corporal punishment. Yeah. Questions about that one?
Where was this when I was in school?
I don't know. Right? Exactly. I hear you.
Any more questions about policies? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the policies and add in wording for the district policy manuals, letter A through J.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we vote, please?
Mullins?
Aye.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Spoon?
Aye.
Wagers?
Aye. Number 54, proposed approval of the first revised budget for the 2526 fiscal year.
I love your notes, by the way. They really help.
Thank you very much.
He is amazing at that.
There's still plenty to talk about, but a lot less than an original budget. Cause the original budget in June is truly a best guess based on historicals. Because frankly, especially this year, we didn't have any allocations yet. And our state aid, which comprises a huge portion of our general fund revenue, wasn't out until the middle of August, I believe. So. But I'll go through this. Feel free to stop me, ask questions. But Fund 11, our general fund, our general operating fund, local sources of revenue. We have a slight bump in our property tax revenue. So those are the two, the top two items on general fund. We get those directly from our estimate of needs. So when we get that from auditors, usually in August, we're able to back into that number. So it's a best guess, it's a best educated guess on the original budget. And then it's really refined to be able to predict it, I mean, within a percentage point. Cause usually we collect 99.1, 99.2% of that property tax revenue that we get from that estimate of needs. So we're looking at a 4.6% increase on those two line items.
Cassie, do you think that that is because the evaluation of existing properties has gone up? Or is it because there's been new development in town or?
It's probably a combination of both. Yeah. We usually, I mean, 3% is kind of the target on, on the original budget. And I know some CFOs will call around to the county assessors. It's really a best guess until we have that estimate of needs in front of us. And so I think it's a combination of both. And then a slight increase on interest earnings. I took that from the actuals. We, we have, that's 1,300 interest earnings. If you look on the far left column, we sat right at about 700,000 and I think we'll hit that again unless interest rates really drop quickly, which they very well could. Intermediate sources of revenue, right in the middle. I really dialed that back from the original budget. I think I overshot on the, on the original. But our ad valorem and then county apportionment, those should be pretty similar to last year. I think we usually collect, again, within a percentage of the prior year. So those actuals are really good to go off of unless something dramatic happens in the ad valorem world. And then state sources of revenue, that's all your 3,000 coatings. Largest differences here, you can see on state aid, that's the 3210. That's our biggest portion of state revenue for general fund. And this is the one that we received in August, Ms. Durkey. That usually comes in July.
Mid-July.
Mid-July of every other year. And this year, I believe it came in mid-August. That number will continue to change throughout the year as enrollment fluctuates. We'll get different state aid amounts, especially on, on the mid-year. So that number will be different on the second revision. 3250 is the FBA. This is the Flex Benefit Allowance. This just increased because the legislature pushed more money in to, you know, kind of compensate for rising insurance costs. So that one should be at that amount. That's the 3250. Or a little bit above as we, as we work our way through the year. And then miscellaneous revenue, this includes Ms. Schley-Huber's opioid abatement grant pathways to partnerships. And then a couple of state allocated funds like ACE Technology and Inspired to Teach Awards. I think the most exciting part of the general fund is federal revenue. So if you look at actuals for last year, just the bold items at the bottom. And then the projected for this year were, this is the settle that we've talked about from COVID funds. It's exciting for me because it's easier to budget. Last year, or 2223, excuse me, 2324, we received over $5 million in federal funding. So that cliff, as we went off that to 3, 3 and 1/2, that was hard to budget. But now you're seeing across the board from actual to original to first revision, they're very consistent. And a lot of these are predictable as, as we work through the year, especially when you get that second revision in February. The only other thing I would note here is carryover. We've been able to sustain that carryover, which is good. Ms. Durkey, you mentioned the kind of difficulty with predicting federal funds. So it's important to maintain that carryover while not flirting with the carryover penalty. And we're in a good spot for that right now, I feel like. The last thing on the general fund revenue is, based on the second revision, all the way to our actual numbers, we were able to budget within half a percent of revenue for general fund, which is, which is really great. You can be too conservative on both revenue and expenditures and create this huge gap where you build your carryover really quickly. So it's better to be precise, as close to 100% as possible, rather than being ultra-conservative on revenue and ultra-conservative on expenditures. So.
Cass, you were fourth, half, 4,000 off? He was trying to do a zero bed.
So, yeah, we.
So he was pretty close. I think we overspent by.
Yeah, Ms. Durkey came in and said, you know, I don't want you to get your hopes up if, you know, in the future, you don't predict that closely. And I jokingly, not jokingly said, oh, we'll predict that closely. Because a lot of these are easily predictable. And then some of them are a best guess. So I think if you can get within 3 or 4%, that's probably the goal every year. Half a percent, that might be difficult in the future, but.
He did a great job. That's what I'm saying. That's what I said too.
For myself. All right, general fund expenditures, if there's no more, no questions on revenue. So general fund expenditures, really the number to look at is the very bottom one to the right and how it compares, how it compares to our actual and then our original budget. Basically, I just proportionally increased it by what the increase was looking like from original budget to the first, or yeah, from the original budget to the first revision. Everything else is really a best guess on the expenditure side. So that bottom number is the authority to spend. And so we fluff it a little bit to make sure that we don't have to call an emergency meeting to approve more expenditures as we work towards the end of the year. Now, that won't matter until really the second revision. That'll be a really close estimate. It'll probably come, you know, under that when we get actuals for the year. But the second revision will be where we tie everything up and make sure that, you know, we don't necessarily have to meet again until the original budget for the next year. So. Yeah, February is the second revision. You can have as many revisions as you want, Ms. Durkey, just doesn't like.
Did you hear her say that?
Or two.
It was a super small whisper. Well, I just, you know, we try to do a decent job projecting. So it's kind of nice not to have to go back and re-meet in April going, ah, I need more money. Cause you can't over-appropriate what you.
If you spend enough time on the front end of this, you shouldn't have to have revisions. So. Not yet, Mr. Mullins, not yet. All right, co-op fund. So as you go to Fund 12, that's our co-op fund. No big changes in Fund 12. You see the deposit coding error that I mentioned on the original budget. That's the 70,000. That remittance comes in and it says, you shall deposit into the general fund. And, and knew me at the time thought, I shall deposit this into the general fund. And it actually goes in the co-op fund. So we, I know better now, but that was corrected on that 5,000 line item on non-revenue receipts. Source 4281 is no longer coming out of Fund 12, but I just wanted to include it because it's the first time you do not see it on any of the three columns. So on the second revision, I'll probably just take that out since it doesn't exist anymore. On the expenditures, no appreciable changes here. We just try to stay consistent with kind of a balance between actuals last year, but fluffing enough to give authority to spend versus the original budget that we did in May to present in June.
So I just would mention on Title III, we now have enough students to carry our own budget. Before, we had to co-op with other districts and then we were the main LEA, the Local Education Agency that would basically quote-unquote supervise all the, the distribution of all the funds. So that's why we're our own little.
So it comes out of 11 now?
Right.
Any questions on co-op? All right. Then we'll go to building funds, revenue and expenditures. Source 1500 is residual insurance money from the windstorm funds that ended at the beginning of last year. We did budget a smaller amount here for year 26 due to a couple of reimbursements from the city for the sidewalk. And then cap owes us a little bit of money for carpet replacement at ECEC. So there's a smaller amount there on 1500, just to account for that. And then 3,000 is our red bud money. That is, that's a best estimate at this point. We don't have that allocation yet either. So. We will have it for the second revision. It'll be an exact number. On the expenditure side, on 2,600, we've had to kind of shuffle utilities to the building fund, which is absolutely allowed, you know, by state statute, until we see what happens with enrollment. Luckily, we have a healthy enough building fund to do that and we can adjust at any time throughout the year to push those back into general fund should we see an increase in enrollment. 4,200 on, I believe, the actuals, you'll see that land acquisition services. I just kept this on here on the notes for that Methodist property purchase, just to explain why there's zeros on the other two, or the original and the first revision. Unless Ms. Durkey says, I don't think we're purchasing any property in the.
I sell some.
In the near future. So it's just a drastic change from 2 million to zero. So hopefully that helped explain that. 4,600 was the city donation for the admin entry project. And then 4,700, we budgeted quite a bit and I kept that on the first revision just because we're redoing the Methodist Property Gym. I guess I should stop calling it the Methodist Property Gym. Our annex, we will be redoing that. So kept that as a budget item on the expense side on Fund 21. The good news with 21 is we were able to increase our carryover a little bit, which is great, especially with all the bond projects going on, should we ever need to use it.
We need, I need to do our table that shows you where we're at on bond projects. Because as we can incorporate the little ones, like for instance, Limestone just got a playground. That was a bond project, but we were able to squeeze that out of current bond money or building. So it's kind of cool. If you haven't been by Limestone, they got a brand new big, I call it a big toy. They Sony did that, but it's really great. With all the fall space, you gotta go look at it. It's awesome.
Yeah. I feel like we try to expedite those as much as possible within, you know, as far as the timeline goes. All right, Fund 22, which is child nutrition.
Oh, fun.
Yeah.
The milk.
So this is the one that, probably the biggest area to note here is the drop in carryover. So when you go down to 6,000, you see the actual at 1.79 and then you see what I came out with, that auditors looked at and verified was our carryover for the new year at 1.4. And that's, that's what we've been preparing you all for as we transition from what we did last year with CEP back to kind of the traditional way of meal charges.
I'm just going to give you a little bit of flavor on the federal part. This is all federal money. If you remember, CEP was full-blown last year and we did blow our budget, which is fine. For one year, you can kind of, you know, manage that. Claudia, I really, when she comes next time, I think she can provide more clarity. But we were talking today about her concern about Title I funding because it's down this year, like $200,000. And she had a lot of carryover in Title I. So not worried about quote-unquote cutting positions. But she mentioned that our free and reduced rate, which drives our disadvantaged and also free and reduced for child nutrition, our number's up, yet our allocation's down. And she was talking to the Stillwater Director whose numbers are down, but their allocation is up. So she is on it. She was calling the State Department today to ask because they delayed calculation, or the allocations based on a mistaken, in how they allocated it. So the formulas were off. So I'm just curious, it doesn't make sense to me that we can have higher free and reduced rate, but yet lower Title I funding, which is what that's partly based on? And then another district would have lower numbers but higher funding. So there's some discrepancies that we're curious about. So she's, she's pretty astute at noticing things like that. So she'll be following up anyway.
And we still have a, you know, a healthy carryover in that, but there's, you know, you have to think of cash flow and operating expenses before you get your big, bigger payment of money in January. And so it kind of sustains you in both, in general fund as well, until that comes in in January. Other than that, on the expenditure side on child nutrition, again, those are really based on last year's actuals. Ms. Pearson's world doesn't fluctuate too much. There have been, you know, drastic price increases, but it really should follow what we saw last year on actuals. All right, bond funds. Bond funds mirror the original budget as well. Some small tweaks here and there. What I do want to point out is the, the biggest difference is just when we received our revenue from the sale of bonds. So we received bond revenue for last year in the summer prior to June 30th. And then this year, received it after June 30th. So when you look at proceeds from sale of original bonds and you think, where is that money at? It actually is in the carryover that's budgeted for this next year. So basically, we just swapped where it should show up in 5112 and where it actually showed up in 6,000 on the actual column. And then it flips back on the original and first revision. That's just a timing thing. I mean, the bottom numbers are still going to work out to be what they should be.
We had some special meetings in the spring, if you remember, just timing-wise, that needed to happen because of postings and such. So that led to us receiving current bond money from what would have been last fiscal year in July. So.
Yeah, it's just a gap.
It's a gap.
So, but it didn't affect our, you know, anything with our estimate of needs. That is all good. On the expenditure side, the bottom number to the right, the 7.5, I just try to max out what we have on hand should we need to use it. I don't ever expect us to spend it all in one year, but it's, again, that authority to spend should something come up. That's, that's important.
Like a water break.
Or HVAC.
Or HVC or anything else.
Go down the list. If there's no questions on bond funds, then we'll go to sinking fund. So sinking fund, no big changes here. Much of this section comes from what we receive on our estimate of needs. There's a section for that. And then Zach Robinson from BOK, every year, he reconciles it with what he has and what he's tracking. So I'm looking at it. Zach is looking at it. So it feels good to have our bond advisor also looking at our sinking fund to make sure it looks good. The most important part of this will be the expense section. The most important part of this will be the expense section, which shows, you know, what we're paying out of our sinking fund for the bonds from twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-five. Some of those are just interest, some are principal, and some are principal and interest, just depending on if they're old bonds or if they're new bonds. And I'll show you where that is on the estimate of needs as well. So that's a great question, Mr. Mullins. I think I probably would have taken those from what BOK sends us. So I don't know if that is, because last year, when we paid, when I first started, we paid basically the end of the two thousand and eight bond, I believe, for Northwoods.
Two thousand and nine.
Or two thousand and nine. So there were kind of three overlapping. And then now this year, there will only be two overlapping until hopefully we pass another one. And so that could be where that came from. I'm gonna star that and check that out. But most of those just come from what we receive. Yeah.
Well, the other.
Actually, actually, this is a, this is a, this is a policy thing. I just remembered. So we were allocating interest when I took over to sinking fund. And our policy reads, reads that it is allocated to general fund, child nutrition, and building fund, those three funds. And so we switched that. I had to think about that for a second. That's why it's down, because it didn't follow our policy for how we allocate interest.
That darn policy.
That darn policy.
And that's one, you catch stuff like that, it's like, and then you correct it. It's not like you're not following policy on purpose, but you catch stuff.
Yeah.
Good job.
The money's there, you just gotta figure.
The money is still there, yeah.
Exactly.
You'll just see an uptick in interest in building fund because that's where it should have went. Yep. Okay. You're making me think here.
He's, he's good at stumping people.
Okay, gift fund and insurance fund. The only thing I'll, I'll mention on gift fund is our community has been very generous. Mr. Nagle and his wife have been, you know, one of them. And some of our gift fund comes from donors, and then some of it comes from Cherokee Nation tribal tag money, actually, and gets put in the gift fund. Gift fund is probably more of an emphasis now than ever because of the new legislation that was passed in the middle of June, right before we ended the fiscal year on June thirtieth, which now counts our gift fund against our general fund carryover that could penalize us. We're still good, ran all those numbers before, you know, the end of the, the fiscal year, two weeks before. But it'll be more of an emphasis this year to, to make sure that we're spending out of that. You know, that, that tag money makes up a big portion of that. So that's just gonna be more of an emphasis this year. Tried to max out the expense side of gift fund to make sure that we are spending that down a little bit. And then insurance fund, no big changes here. We're trying to actually spend kind of the residual amounts of insurance money that we have from last year. That's that five hundred and ninety-one thousand that you see on the actuals. And then I just budgeted for a ma- I always budget for an amount for the new year in case something comes up. Of course, if it was something like, say, a windstorm, we would call a special meeting because there would be some big-ticket items to approve. But hopefully that doesn't happen. Fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed.
Questions for Cass?
Nope, you did a great job.
Yes, thank you for your notes. Okay, any more questions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the first revised budget for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six fiscal year.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Vote, please.
Mullins?
Hamlin?
Aye.
Spoon?
Aye.
Wagers?
Aye. Okay, number fifty-five, proposed approval of the estimate of needs of the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year.
Okay, I promise I'll keep this at like two minutes tops because we don't run off of estimate of needs. It's just a legal requirement every year. We run off of School Budget Act, which basically puts, puts that on us to budget what we have in the bank. And, but a lot of schools, I would say, well over the, you know, the majority, probably eighty to ninety percent of schools in the state of Oklahoma run off of estimate of needs. So the auditors, give them the estimate of needs. It has their balances and it is, you shall not spend more than what this says. And a lot of ours, you'll see on the back pages, are zeroed out because we don't run off of that. We run off of our own budget. But what I would point out is on page one, two, three, you can see, kind of in the middle section, it shows total bonds outstanding as of six-thirty-twenty-five. And the un-matured bonds, that is what we owe on each of those bonds. It follows the bond payment schedule that I have. So any year that we get these, I check those amounts to make sure that the auditors have the right amounts. And then I go to the very back on Exhibit Y, which shows our millage, which is important for our bond revenue. We're sitting at twenty-eight point eight-nine, which is great. That's really, really close to the target we want to hit every year. And then on general fund on Exhibit Y, down at the bottom, where it says total required for twenty-twenty-five tax, that's where we back into those top two budget items on the revenue to see what our, you know, property tax increase might be for the year. So those are the two most important things with the estimate of needs. Other than that, by law, it just needs an approval and then sent off to the respective parties, state auditor's office, the counties, and then we keep one on file here.
Any questions?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. Can we vote, please?
Mullins?
Aye.
Hamlin?
Aye.
Spoon?
Aye.
Wagers?
Aye. Number fifty-six, proposed approval for opening a new six-month certificate of deposit at American Heritage Bank as recommended by the CFO.
And this one is a requirement from the bank's side, not our side. State law allows anyone, I believe, on that, but especially the treasurer, to be able to invest. Actually, we are legally obligated to invest, but this is more for the bank's side, just to say, this is what we're doing. We're trying to take advantage of the interest rate and lock that in. But we're not locking it in for more than six months. I mean, that's, that gives you liquidity access should we need it, but also kind of optimizes those rates.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the opening of a new CD for six months at American Heritage. American Heritage Bank.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we vote, please?
Mullins?
Aye.
Hamlin?
Aye.
Spoon?
Aye.
Wagers?
Aye. Fifty-seven, proposed approval of LD Kern's contractors guaranteed maximum price amendment.
I assure you that at some point, we will stop this project eventually, but we honestly, we're pretty blessed with the way revenue lease is accruing interest and the fact that the project came in at the rate that it did. So we're able to add a few things that still keep us under the fifteen percent allowance for a final GMP. So the whole parking lot on the south side is getting redone, which will make it look seamless, which is great. We're continuing the wall, retaining wall on the east side of the property. And we're gonna feather out the property a little bit so that, well, it won't be quite as steep. It's just gonna make it look finished, to be honest, and so I'm really glad about that. But anyway, this should be the last GMP change.
Any questions?
And Cherry, the black does look good on the side of this new.
It does, doesn't it?
Lawn building, it helped out a lot.
We asked, well, so they've, they painted the railing. Did you notice that? The railing's painted. And then the black trim, which is metal trim above the windows. But they're also gonna repaint, just so you all know, what is gray on the existing building that Dick Watson, Jeannie Kavatch did. It'll tie better because what you're looking at is a combination of cool colors meaning warm. Anyway, I promise it's gonna look better when.
I noticed it, too.
Yeah, Mike even noticed, no, did you not? I didn't think so.
That'll help.
I saw your door frame.
I see what you're saying now.
Yeah.
You said it this weekend, and I was like, what?
What is that? You just have to look at it because it's an evident, you know, you can see it, so.
Madam Chair, I, I make a motion that we approve the LD Kern's contract GMP amendment two for the items identified in the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Vote, please.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Uh, yes.
It was so low, I couldn't tell.
Not me.
Mrs. Hamlin.
Mullins?
Aye.
Hamlin?
Aye.
Spoon?
Aye.
Wagers?
Aye. Any matter not known about or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the posting for this meeting?
There is not.
Any announcements?
Just the topping ceremony, make sure you get that, I'll remind you again, but it'd be great to have everybody present.
September eighteenth.
Four-thirty.
Four-thirty. It is early, but yes. SSCF, uh, yes, I don't think you guys play in it, though. The SSCF golf tournament, is that what you're talking about? What? Oh, you get a team, that's for sure. I'm sure Treta would love it if you guys would get a team together and play in the golf tournament for the foundation.
I will make a good, I'll hand you your drinks.
I was gonna say, I certainly would be good entertainment trying.
I would not be very good at swinging. I think my golf club might go flying.
What? Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. I, you could have my spot. I threw my club accidentally in the rain last year. It was, I think, I'm pretty sure, Arnaud, he, she has it on video. Did you see the video? It was nice. I, it was funny, not gonna lie. I didn't mean to, but it did fly across the golf course. Terrible.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Vote, please.